Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners Board Meeting for Tuesday, June 27th. For introduction purposes, my name is Todd Wilchin. I am the Chair of the County Board. On my left, fellow Commissioner Deb Shore, and on my right, Commissioner Jennifer Brinkman. Commissioners Roma Omensen and Bill Avery are out of town today. Also joining us today from the county attorney's office momentarily would be Ryan Schwarkoff from the county clerk's office. We have the county clerk, Mr. Dan Nolte, and Kelly Lundgren. Our chief administrative officer, Carrie Egan, will also be joining us momentarily, and Ann Ames, our deputy chief administrative officer, is with us this morning. So if you'd please now stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, if you'd please start the agenda.
The Confident Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall through the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. Material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item number minutes, approve of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, June 20th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held last Tuesday, June 20th. Any corrections or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners Department Budget Hearing held on Tuesday, June 20th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners Department Budget Hearing Meeting held last Tuesday, June 20th. Any discussion or corrections? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through June 27th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all claims processed through June 27th. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next is number three, a special presentation. This is Commissioners Award of Excellence, the May winner, who is Richard Bush from the County City Property Management in a category of productivity. And I do have the nomination here that I'll go ahead and read. Richard Bush has been selected as Commissioners Award of Excellence winner for May 2017. Richard works as a maintenance repair worker, too, and began working for the county on February 13th, 2006. He was nominated by Troy Hawk, Clerk of the District Court, in a category of productivity. In his nomination, Mr. Hawk states, "Over the years of my tenure as Clerk of the District Court, this office has made many requests of property management for assistance and reworking workspaces, moving shelving and furniture components, as well as filing cabinets for the purpose of improving office efficiency and comfort of the clerk's employees. Our projects have been varied. Richard has always been accommodating to what he has been assigned, taking into consideration our needs along with the complexity of the assigned job. Richard listens carefully, is knowledgeable, and has made suggestions which have been valuable in accomplishing what we have wished achieve. This has resulted in Richard completing a task efficiently with minimal disruption to our staff and to work requirements. Richard comes to the office prepared with the tools that he needs, a positive and can-do attitude, and has consistently given attention to detail." Mr. Hawk continues, "Recently, the records division in the office of the Clerk of the District Court was remodeled due to the aging record-keeping equipment and other needs. A design firm and construction contractor were hired to carry out the remodel. Upon completion of the project, there was additional work to complete the replacement of various furniture components as required by the records division staff. Richard's expertise for adding and moving the necessary components was accomplished with minimal intrusion to the workings of the division. In conclusion, Mr. Hawk states, "Richard is polite, cheerful, and respectful of the busy nature of this office. For these reasons, we're pleased to award Richard Bush with the Commissioners Award of Excellence for the month of May 2017."
Richard, thank you so much. Congratulations. I think it's telling that you were nominated by somebody from a different department. I think we all appreciate the people we work with every day, and so Troy, thank you for making the nomination. I think that's wonderful, and thanks for your work.
Sure.
Congratulations.
Oh, Richard, come on back. I don't know. If you want to respond in any way or to the award, now would be your time.
Thank you, and it's nice to be recognized in your awards.
Well, and while that nomination was written by Troy, it could have been written by any department or elected official in any of these buildings, and you really are a joy to work with and a pleasure to have as part of our team.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Next is recognition of Roger Forsgren, Steve Slapnica, Corey McQuishen, Jim Coma, Keith Tanhosen, Bob Larson, Curtis Picorni, Jared Johnson, Eric Hunt, and Jeff Mansky for their performance at the Winter Maintenance Workshop in Grand Island on May 10th and 11th, 2017.
Good morning, Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Guys, if you wanted to come on up. This morning, I am joined by Angela Zockel, Ron Bohati, and Bob Jacobs from Lancaster County Engineering. So you guys are aware, for about three or four years now, we have participated in the 2017 statewide winter maintenance workshop. And a couple of years ago, we started acknowledging who were the Lancaster County first-place winners. And so today, I would like to acknowledge first, as the second, first and second-place winners, I would like to acknowledge first for the snowplow trucks at the Winter Maintenance Conference, second place for Lancaster County, Corey and Jim. Corey and Jim are both new to Lancaster County. I don't think, have you guys had your one-year anniversary yet?
Not yet.
Not yet? So congratulations. This is a really big deal. And then first place on the plow trucks for Lancaster County, Roger Forsgren and Steve And Steve told me two years ago that he was going to win this thing, and so he's still striving to win it, but he did win it for Lancaster County, so this is really exciting. And just a little note about the plow trucks, when we're competing with them statewide, we're competing with like Omaha and Sarpy County, who really run these plow trucks in a very urbanized situation, and so we're parallel parking, we're backing up, and if you take too long, or if you hit an object, your points are taken away. And then in addition to that, you also have to take a written test, and you have to do a test on walking around your equipment, and the equipment is tampered with, so it has several safety violations. You have to find these violations, so it's a three-part test. On the backhoe, second place for Lancaster County is Bob Larson. First place was Keith Tinnelson. As we're separated by just a couple of points. So on the front-end loader, we had Corey again. It's all on one certificate, so we'll just give you the... And first place, Jeff Mansky.
All right.
Way to lead by example, Jeff.
There you go.
Right? On the skid loader, Jared Johnson, second place. Also been with us for less than a year, so this is really super exciting. And first place, Curtis Picorni. Motor grader, we have Eric Hunt, who you may recall won first place last year statewide. Eric was at a little bit of a disadvantage because the rules say if you were the winner last year, you have to go first the next year, so sometimes you have the advantage of watching the other guys do it, kind of figure it out a little bit. Eric didn't have that advantage, but he still finished second overall, actually. And first place goes to Bob Larson. And so Bob already... In addition to having a number of Lancaster County winners here, and I'd like to say that I don't make this a mandatory activity, so these guys volunteered to go out and take this training and compete against their peers statewide, and I really, I super appreciate that, and we do have a good time when we go out there, and I think everybody learns a lot of things. There's a big emphasis on safety and safe practice when we're out there, but I'm really proud this year to have not one state winner, but two state winners. And so I invited LTAP to come today, and as you guys know, that's the Nebraska Local Projects, right? So we have Melissa Townstead and Phyllis Squab here today, and I think I just butchered your name, Phyllis, I'll apologize for that. They work with LTAP, and what I'd like to say is Ron Bohati also volunteers with LTAP to help put this event together, and it's a really big deal for all of our operators statewide. And so we today would like to present to our winners, Bob Larson, if you'd like to come forward. The winners statewide actually get their name on the traveling plaque, so this is a big deal. And so Bob was the winner of the motor grader competition. It's super, super exciting this year. And then our second winner overall was Curtis. So Curtis won the skid loader this year, and it was a dead fight. Let me tell you how close this was. So Curtis and the number two tied on the mechanical safety inspection of the equipment. They tied on the written test. They actually tied on the point scale, score for the course, and then Curtis actually won because he was five seconds faster. So it's pretty cool. When we go out there and compete, we compete...
That's cool.
It is cool, right? Did you know that? When we go out there and compete, we're competing against other entities that practice on practice courses before they go to try to win. We don't have time to do that in Lancaster County. We're practicing in the real world, and so I think that just speaks to how dedicated all of these individuals are. Some of them new employees, some of them very seasoned employees, and I'm super, super proud of them today.
If I could, I would love to get a picture of you guys all together with Pam, right at the podium, because I want to put it in the NACO newsletter recognizing all of our winners. So while you're all here...
Shore, guys up front.
Yeah, ladies in there, yeah.
Roger, for sure. Yeah. I'm definitely by Steve.
Perfect. And this is a statewide honor, so we should celebrate it. Thank you.
Well, and again, thank you all for your work on behalf of Lancaster County residents. You do great work, and we're all very fortunate to have you guys out there on the roads, taking care of all of us. So thank you so much.
Parallel parking, a snowplow, is that right? Oh, gee, was...
And playing checkers with a backhoe.
Amazing work that you guys do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Number four is a public hearing. This is for the proposed sale of property generally located at 2201 South 11th Street in the city of Lincoln, Lancaster County, Nebraska, which includes declaring that the property no longer serves accounting purpose determining fair market value and setting the date for sale of the property.
Based upon the recommendation of the county attorney, I make a motion, we cancel the public hearing. Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to cancel the public hearing. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number five is new business. Five A is a resolution regarding the proposed sale of property generally located at 2201 South 11th Street in the city of Lincoln, Lancaster County, Nebraska, which includes declaring that the property no longer serves accounting purpose determining on fair market value and setting the date for sale of the property.
We're going to go ahead and hold this item, Mr. Clerk. Please continue with the next agenda item.
Five B is a special event permit application from Nebraska Sports Council for the following events. Cornhusker State Games Adventure Race on Saturday, July 15th, 2017. Cornhusker State Games Cycling Tour on Saturday, July 23rd, 2017. And Cornhusker State Games Gravel Grinder on Saturday, July 29th, 2017.
Good morning.
Morning. So I'm Dave Manerick, Executive Director of the Nebraska Sports Council. Scott Ash, our Director of Operations, is here, and Brandon Holsher, where's he at? Our Director of Events, who worked on the permits specifically with the volunteer sport directors, and two of them are here today. Jason Saboran, the Director of the Gravel Grinder, and Glenn Trout, Director of Adventure Race. They can answer any questions about the specifics of the permit and the events themselves. The Cornhusker State Games begin July 21st, and they run through the 30th of July for most of the events. We have a few events outside of that window, but this is the 33rd annual, and we're on pace to get to 12,000 participants this year. The final deadline to register for most of these events is next Wednesday, July 5th. So we're excited, we have a big event planned again, and opening ceremonies on July 21st will kick it all off, and these events are important to that whole scheme. So we appreciate the opportunity to be here and to, you know, have, seek permission to use the county roads and byways.
Well, I think this is a good opportunity just to tell a little bit about the three events, just kind of, just briefly summarize the republic.
Hi, Glenn Trout with Adventure Race. Adventure Race has two components, a family component, which we have teams of two and four in there. Most of that's going to take place within the city of Lincoln, but then there is a sport component to it with teams of two that will go outside the city of Lincoln, be stretched out to Yankee Hill area, and that'll take about four to six hours, be going through city of Lincoln parks, Lancaster County roads, state parks.
Cycling tour?
I can speak on behalf of the cycling...
I'll go.
Yeah. The cycling tour is basically a non-competitive ride through the county. We have a 25-mile, a 50-mile, and a 100-mile ride. Like I said, it's non-competitive, there's no racing going on. We do go into Seward and Butler Counties as well, and that's, takes place on, what, Saturday, July 29th, or Sunday, July...
Oh, yeah.
I got it in front of me.
I think that one's on the 23rd.
23rd, correct. So anyway, that starts the Fallbrook area, and will head towards Seward and the Branch Stoke areas, and then return, depending on the mileage, one to two to three hours.
Jason Saboran, I do the gravel grinder race. It's, gravel grinder is basically a road bike race, but it's on the gravel roads out in the county, and we're starting at about 56 in Pine Lake, the Village Gardens area, and heading out of town, going through Roca, through Melford, and around Crete, and then back through Roca and back to Lincoln. We have routes of about 100 miles, 60 miles, and about 30 miles, and although it is a race, it's timed. Most of the riders are just trying to finish because of the distances, they're just challenging themselves, but there are a few people who are in it for the race, so, but it's a good competition.
Can you tell me if our chief administrative officer has signed up for any of these bicycling events, because he's kind of a fanatic?
Not this year.
Well, these are great events for Lancaster County and for the city of Lincoln, and also for the entire state. So on behalf of the county, I want to thank you all for the hard work you do. I know the Cornhusker State Games are rather large events to schedule and to organize, and so I know you work year-round to make it a successful event, so we very much appreciate it. Are there any questions, I guess?
I will move approval of the three special event permit applications.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the three special event permit applications from the Nebraska Sports Council. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
See you at opening ceremonies.
Thanks.
Five C is an amendment of interlocal cooperation agreement county grant contract C-15-552 between the city of Lincoln and Lancaster County to provide Lancaster County visitors improvement funding for the city's prairie corridor on Haynes Branch. The amendment extends the contract from initial one-year period from July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018. Lancaster County will pay the city of Lincoln $30,000 for the additional one-year period.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the interlocal cooperative agreement and county contract with the city of Lincoln for the city's prairie corridor on Haynes Branch. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. D are agreements with the following individuals to provide referee services to hear valuation protests for the 2017 tax year and to transmit information to the Lancaster County Board of Equalization. This is John Wordeman at the rate of $75 per hour, and Greg Heinzman at the rate of $55 per hour.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to enter into agreement with individuals to provide referee services to hear valuation protests. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. E is a quote from Cummins Allison, an amount of $3,137 to purchase a currency scanner, impact printer, and related accessories for the county sheriff's office. The vendor will provide service on a time and material basis.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the quote from Cummins Allison for the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. F is an amendment to county contract C-17-209 with Dr. Zakaria Saduku to provide psychiatric services at the Mental Health Crisis Center. The amendment extends the contract from July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, and increases the rate of pay to $725 for 24-hour period of coverage.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Dr. Zakaria Saduku to provide psychiatric services at the Mental Health Crisis Center. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. G is an agreement with the Child Guidance Center for internal case management services at the Youth Services Center. The county will pay up to $67,459.83 for the services. Term of agreement is July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018.
Good morning, Ms. Hood.
Good morning, Melissa Hood, Youth Services Center. This is just a renewal for us. It's for case management, mental health services through the day. We have another contract with Blue Valley that provides them in the evening, so this is just a continuing contract. Just came up if you have any questions.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the Child Guidance Center for internal case management services at the Youth Services Center. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. H is an interlocal agreement with Howard County for the safekeeping, care, and sustenance of Howard County's pre-adjudicated juveniles at the Youth Services Center. Lancaster County will be reimbursed at the rate of $276 per juvenile per day.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to enter, to approve the interlocal agreement with Howard County for the Youth Services Center for pre-adjudicated juveniles. Any discussion? I will just make a note that I will be voting no on this. We discussed this at a staff meeting a few weeks ago. We've established that the true cost of detention is $307 a day, and I just don't believe I can justify it to the county taxpayers that we subsidize other counties for housing juvenile youth in our county, so. With that, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
No.
Motion carries two yes, one no. Five I is an interlocal agreement with Red Willow County for the safekeeping, care, and sustenance of Red Willow County's pre-adjudicated juveniles at the Youth Services Center. Lancaster County will be reimbursed at the rate of $276 per juvenile per day.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement with Red Willow County for safekeeping, care, and sustenance of Red Willow County's pre-adjudicated juveniles at the Youth Services Center. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
No.
Motion carries two yes, one no. Five J is a contract between the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services Division of Children and Family Services in Lancaster County for the Lancaster Youth Services Center for the provision of juvenile detention services for juveniles committed to or placed with DHHS. The county shall receive a per diem rate of $307 per day, not to exceed $10,000. Term of the contract is July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to enter the contract with Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services for Lancaster County Youth Services Center for detention services for juveniles committed to or placed with HHS. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. K is a resolution adopting an agreement between the state and Nebraska Department of Roads and Lancaster County for the Denton Spur Project, for the Denton Spur Project Detour.
Welcome back, Ms. Dingman.
Thank you. Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, I'm also returning your pen. We've talked about this in staff meeting about three or four weeks ago, and somehow it was delayed getting on your agenda, and this, as you may recall, is the detour route the state is taking. They need to replace a box culvert that is on the spur, and so they are going to detour on Denton Road in our jurisdiction, and then up 77 and around this structure while they're modifying it, and so they need this agreement from us. As standard in their agreement, they take responsibility for any damage done to the road during the time of the detour.
Any questions for Ms. Dingman? Commissioner Shore?
Just curious how long they think the project will take.
I'm not really sure with this type of structure how long it will take. I think it was about a six-month time period.
Wow, okay.
And my question, I know we talked about it at the staff meeting, but because of the area that's involved, you have a lot of dead-end county roads down there?
Right.
I mean, was there a plan that the state was going to be responsible for notifying everybody, or will that be something that the county's responsible for?
What, we'll... What we'll, what we will do is, once we hear from the state that they're going to start their project, we will go ahead and show it on our road closure map. And I just want to remind the public again, we have that map. It is on the, the city-county website. At the bottom of the webpage, it says, "Street closures." If you click on it, it will show you all closures and also with the reason why the road is closed in all of Lancaster County. And so we, we can, we can do that for our residents, yes.
Any other questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the state and Nebraska Department of Roads for the Denton Spur Project detour. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
L is a recommendation from the Purchase Department and County Engineer to award a contract of Midwest Pump and Equipment for a one-thousand-gallon above-ground fuel tank and monitoring system. The total amount is twenty-three thousand two hundred and nine dollars.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So this is for the installation of an unleaded fuel tank in the Raymond area that will allow us to fuel our trucks as well as the sheriff's vehicles from the Raymond location and a monitoring system to go along with it. It was an expense that we had budgeted for in our current budget.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Midwest Pump and Equipment for an above-ground fuel tank and monitoring system. Any discussion?
Pam, when you say Raymond location, is that the same place where we have the rock piles that are now fenced, or is it a different location?
It is associated with the building there.
Okay.
So it will meet the, the code and parameters to be, to be by the building. Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
M is a contract between Gana Trucking and Excavating in Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Engineers' Office for erosion control at three locations in Lancaster County. The cost of county is two hundred and seventy-one thousand one hundred and six dollars and forty-five cents. Work is to be completed on or for November tenth, two thousand seventeen.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So you have previously awarded this, this contract and, or previously sent the notice of award for this contract, and now you're approving the contract itself. As you may recall, this is the contract for Bridge H sixty-six at approximately one hundred and twelve in Elbow, D eighty-eight on Agnew Road just east of Highway seventy-nine, and Rock Creek, the road itself that's had some problems with an adjacent drainage, drainage, I guess ditch, for lack of a better word, or tributaries, and that is located on the west side of Highway seventy-nine on Rock Creek Road.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Gana Trucking and Excavating for erosion control at three locations in Lancaster County. Any discussion? Commissioner Brinkman?
I just had a question about the Rock Creek work. I got to drive along Rock Creek this morning to take a look at it, and we have a nice little warning light there on the side. So is the issue that drainage is coming over the road, or what are the, or is it eroding the asphalt? What is happening?
You know, Commissioner Brinkman, you and Commissioner Wilton have the joy in your districts. For whatever reason, we have some large drainage tributaries that run exactly adjacent to the road, and, and it creates some interesting problems for us, especially with all the rains we've had the last several years. And so what's happened with Rock Creek is that drainage tributary comes, I mean, it just goes right, right adjacent to that road, and it has gotten very deep. The farmer there put hay bales in the bottom of it, if you got on your car and looked at it, so I mean, and it really just needs to be stabilized in order to protect the road. We do have, actually, for all three of these projects, our Army Corps of Engineers permits in, and they are the emergency permits, because I'm trying to get them as quickly as I can so that we can fix and stabilize. In the case of Rock Creek, the road, in the case of D eighty-eight, the bridge, and I might add again, and in the case of H sixty-six, the bridge, and I'll add again there, too, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Five N are amendments to the following contracts for the annual services of used oil collection services. The amendments renew the contracts from July twelfth, two thousand seventeen, through July, through July eleventh, two thousand eighteen. And this is for county contract C dash sixteen dash three fifty with Jebro Incorporated in an amount not to exceed one thousand dollars. And county contract C dash sixteen dash three forty-nine with TSO in an amount not to exceed one thousand five hundred dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend contracts for the annual services of used oil collection services. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
O is an amendment to county contract C dash thirteen dash three forty-one with Allen Gibbs and Holick LLC for the annual requirements of auditing services for all Lancaster County funds, officers, and the Lincoln Lancaster County Public Building Commission. The amendment renews the contract from July first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. The cost of county is not to exceed seventy-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Good morning, Mr. Meyer.
All right, good morning. Dennis Meyer, County Budget and Fiscal Director. This, this amendment to this contract really is for the audit services for Lancaster County. It includes an audit for the Crisis Center. It includes an audit for the Lancaster County Correctional Facility Joint Public Agency and Lancaster County itself. The wording of the Public Building Commission is kind of brought in there, too. What we did back in thirteen is we went through an RFP process, and we always have the PBC kind of piggyback on there with us, so that's kind of why some of their wording is in there. The PBC does pay for their portion of the audit. So through that RFP, we awarded a three-year contract plus three additional one-year contracts, and so this one here will be the second of the additional one. So we will have this one, one more, and then we'll go back out to the RFP process. The, the cost on this contract is at a two-and-a-half percent increase from last year. That was kind of set up as we went through the RFP process and the additional three one, or additional three one-year contracts.
Any questions for Mr. Meyer?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the contract with Allen Gibbs and Holick LLC, sorry, Elsie, for the annual requirements of auditing services. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Five P is an amendment to county contract C dash fourteen dash two thirty-four with Nebraska Lab Link for the annual requirements of city-county blood chemistry profiles. The amendment signs the contract from Nebraska Lab Link to Lab Corp.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Nebraska Lab Link for the annual requirements of the city-county blood chemistry profiles. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Q are amendments to the following contracts for the annual supply of county corrections uniform accessories. The amendments extend the contracts for an additional three-month term beginning June twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, through September twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen. And this is for county contract C dash thirteen dash two seventy-three with Lawmans and Shooter Supply, Inc. The cost of county with the price increase will remain the same at eleven thousand dollars. County contract C dash thirteen dash two seventy-two with goals, the cost of county shall not exceed six thousand nine hundred dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend contracts for the annual supply of county corrections uniform accessories. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
R are amendments to the following contracts for the annual supply of correction clothing for guards and maintenance staff. The amendments extend the contracts for an additional three-month term beginning July sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, through October, through October fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. And this is for county contract, county contract C dash thirteen dash three one four with Aromeric Uniform Services. The cost of county with the price increase will remain the same at three hundred dollars. County contract C dash thirteen dash three fifteen with goals, the cost of county with the price increase will remain at fifteen thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the contracts for the annual supply of correction clothing for guards and maintenance staff. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Five S are amendments to the following contracts for the annual requirements of poly-patch applicator rental and mastiff pave patch. The amendments extend the contracts from July first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. And this includes county contract C dash fourteen dash three twenty-eight with Logan Contractor Supply, Inc. The cost of county is not to exceed seven thousand six hundred dollars. And county, county contract C dash fourteen dash three twenty-nine with Wright Point Company. The cost of county is not to exceed eighteen thousand two hundred dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the following, or excuse me, contracts for the annual requirements for poly-patch applicator rental and mastiff pave patch. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilton.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Five T is a contract with Peoples Health Center to provide Lancaster County general assistance clients with primary medical care. The term of the contract is July first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. The cost of county is not to exceed three hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred and seven dollars.
Good morning, Ms. Wil.
Good morning, Sarah with Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. And with me this morning, I have Shirley Cherry with Health Three Sixty, Linda Becker with Health Three Sixty, and then Joan Anderson with the Medical Society. And this contract basically transfers the primary care of general assistance clients from the Health Department over to Peoples Health Center. It includes primary care and then emergency dental services as well. And Joan has been involved a lot since the beginning.
Since Commissioner Shore was in charge.
That's right.
And this, this started ten, ten years ago with the mayors.
Two thousand and three, actually. Yeah, I don't know if you want me.
Well, thank you. And of course, all the commissioners know about this, but historically, in two thousand and three, actually, when the community health endowment was started around that time, the general assistance was helped out tremendously by getting medication assistance. We went from like a hundred and eighty thousand a month down to fifty, down to thirty. Now we're right around twenty-five thousand a month. I know it's going to be much less when we go to Peoples Health Center because we can leverage some usage of their federally qualified health dollars. So I just want to compliment the, the Health Department for being very willing to do this until the federally qualified Health Center was in place, and now under Linda and Shirley and Sarah, who's done a remarkable job. This is going to be the first time you've had general assistance on a, basically a cost per patient, where before you had to play, pay a fat, flat fee. So I think you'll see some savings. Care will be, as always, very highly professional because Sarah's already gotten the contracts with all of the offices, specialty offices, and I've been contacted about a number of them, asking, "Are we supposed to sign this?" I don't think I told you that. And I said, "Yes, you should sign it. It doesn't mean anything different other than it's coming from Health Three Sixty." So I'm really excited about it, and I know the GA monitoring committee will be watching it, and Linda Becker will be kind of the coordinator. She's just been here less than a month, or about a month, and, oh, two months. Well, then you know everything. Okay, so very experienced, Ariane. I, I'm just thrilled, but again, we can't slight what the Health Department has done for us over all these years, because without them, we would not have been able to serve these clients. So I'm excited. I think it'll be great.
Well, and part of the recent, I'm sorry, for the initiative, of course, is the whole medical home concept. So I'll let you talk about that.
Sure. Well, one of the biggest issues, and Sarah's right, when it started with the mayor's safety net conversation many years ago, I can't remember when that was. I can only gauge things by grand, grandkids' ages, and I didn't mark that one in my memory bank, but the problem with the GA as it is now is a patient's off GA, they're on GA, they go to either Peoples Health Center when they're off GA, then they go to the Health Department, and then they have to go to another location, back to Peoples Health Center, or maybe they're on Medicaid. This way, the medical home, if they choose to, but they do have choices, they will be established at Health Three Sixty, they can stay at Health Three Sixty. If they're off GA for two or three months, which sometimes happens, they still have the same provider, they are just paying the co-pay rather than the county. And then ultimately, when they find that they're either on Medicaid, or they find a job, or whatever the reason is that they're off GA, they still have that medical home as an option. So yeah, it's a great option.
Well, and I think it's important to note that it's a continuum of care.
Yes.
And you have better health outcomes for the patients, and it actually, that process also benefits taxpayers because you have, again, better health outcomes.
Absolutely.
That actually costs less.
Absolutely. I would be, though, I, again, I just have to compliment the Health Department for handling, for the continuity is essential, but they did the best job they could while they had the patients. But now if you have a diagnosed diabetic and they start at GA, and now they have to transition someplace else, they have all that continuity. You're absolutely right, and that will absolutely not only save the taxpayers money, which is, you know, one of the major things, but much better outcomes for the patient. They're going to be much healthier and, in many cases, more productive, can go back to work and all of those things, so.
Well, and it is a better model of, of healthcare delivery.
Yes.
And I think, again, Sarah, but also your staff, Ms. Anderson, and the staff at Health Three Sixty, the Peoples Health Center, as well as Lutheran Family Services, and, yeah, the, the Public Health Department.
Right.
Everyone for the last, you know, fifteen years has really worked hard, and this is a, I think, a good example of how we collaborate here in Lincoln and Lancaster County.
Right, absolutely. And the transition, think about it, a group that have been handling this for ten, fifteen years, now they're helping transition their patients to another location, and they've been as gracious as could be to make that happen, and I think over the next few months, that transition will, you know, it won't go without bumps, because we're all humans and we're dealing with patients that may show up at the Health Department because they forget that they're supposed to go to Health Three Sixty, but the communication will be key, and I think everybody's been on the ground floor, and Mr. Egan is very excited because it means less work for him. Is that not right?
Well, she's had a very few appeals.
Right, right.
In fact, I think the number is zero.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Sarah needs a lot of kudos on this, so I think it'll be great.
Agreed, agreed.
You can officially retire, Commissioner Shore, now that you made this happen.
You and I, you and I can do it at the same time.
There you go.
Ryan Swarf, Deputy County Attorney. It's my understanding we're just waiting on the Professional Lie Bill, the insurance confirmation still, so if you just make it contingent upon receipt of that.
Okay. I will move approval based upon the receipt of the certificate of insurance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with the Peoples Health Center to provide Lancaster County general assistance clients primary medical care contingent on the certificate of insurance being provided. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Five U is a grant contract with Cedar's Youth Services in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars for the Emergency Shelter Program. The contract is funded by the Joint Budget Committee for the period of July first, two thousand seventeen through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
This contract provides for emergency shelter for youth who are homeless or at risk of being homeless, or those youth coming out of the detention facility. We also have in the contract, too, that this funding will allow for additional shelter beds at the emergency shelter location.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Cedar Youth Services for the Emergency Shelter Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. V is a grant contract with Cedar's Youth Services in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for the Tracker Program through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Aid Grant. Term of the grant contract is July first, two thousand seventeen through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
And this contract provides a tracker for our preadjudicated youth. Those are the youth that would otherwise be in detention, but they're supervised by our staff with an electronic monitor usually. The tracker helps follow up with the youth, helps make sure that the youth is in school, helps with family, with, providing an individualized plan for them, and then also helps with supervising them in the community, making sure that they're at various locations that they're supposed to be at.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Cedar Youth Services for the Tracker Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next is number six, consent items. Right-of-way contracts between Lancaster County and the following. Richard and Geraldine Benish, co-trustees, Northwest Forty Street and West Agnew Road in amount of two thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. North Bluff Commodities, Inc., North Forty Street and Bluff Road in amount of one thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Thomas and Louise Pavy, Live Estate, North Fourth Street and Raymond Road in a total amount of six thousand, seven-hundred-and-seven dollars and seventy-five cents, and this is for two contracts. Utility permit number fifteen sixty-one, allowing Windstream Hosted Solution LLC to relocate five-hundred-and-thirty linear feet of underground cable on West Denton Road as part of Bridge N one thirty-eight construction. There is no cost to county. Receive and place on file the following report for May twenty-seventeen, and this is for the County Sheriff.
Move approval of the consent items.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries three to, three to zero. Next is public comment, those wishing to speak on items relating to county business and on agenda may do so at this time.
Is there anyone from the public here to speak? Mr. Clerk, please continue the agenda.
Next is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, June twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, at eighty-eight thirty a.m. in the Bill Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not hold a meeting on Tuesday, July fourth, two thousand seventeen. The next regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, July, July eleventh, two thousand seventeen, at nine a.m. in Room One Twelve of the County City Building, with the Board of Equalization meeting immediately following. County Commissioners can be reached at four oh two, four four one, seven four four seven, or commish@lancaster.na.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live. It is rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays on Five City TV Cable Channel Five. In addition, the meeting may be viewed on the Internet at lancaster.na.gov under Five City TV Video On Demand or Five City TV on YouTube.
I move adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Okay, that concludes the Board of Commissioners meeting. Have a good day.